All right, first item.
Yeah, they're not going to start paying. Is that's like denying, and I think this is. And at that time where you get, do all these things and we should have something in there to show.
But the bidding review procedure is the event, or?
Yeah, under permitting and review procedure. Uh, something on this order that where they. They show that uh, they they will not uh.
No, either seek to use eminent.
Yeah, pursue any eminent domain.
Be come away. Enforce that too, that that, no, they could do the the uh. Permitting review procedure and go through that, and then after the fact, they could go through and apply for eminent domain on stuff. So there needs to be an enforcement clause in there. That goes along with that, and then I I think the wording on it would be a little bit only two. One term here that had suggested a way to me to, and I didn't write it down, I wish I might have. That that uh, people find permit don't pursue eminent domain. But they get the utility company to pursue eminent domain to come to them. And that that the project, that they ensure that the project does not require eminent domain from.
In any form, uh, in any form, right.
It it's so.
What if we just start right there, where it says the permit holder shall ever use or seek to use eminent domain to acquire any real property interest to construct or operate the project, if that works? Is that enough? Or you've got the condemnation waiver on there? Steve.
Yeah, I totally, yeah, I think, I don't know that we'd get all the wording done right now, but if. We can do a little tweaking later, but we stay under the permitting and review. Or we want to slide that in, and we could put it in, like with this text or something pretty close to.
Maybe put it in right at the beginning, possibly. On the permitting interview, so they know right off the bat that they're, can't do that, or is there a better place?
Or do we add another, I mean, each one of these is kind of a, under that permitting, we've got road use agreement, we do decommissioning plan. We do all of, we've got, just put it over heading. The use of uh, non-use of eminent domain. Cause you, you want to make it, you want to highlight it a little bit, I think.
Carol, do you hear us tonight? Do you hear us, Carol?
Yeah, I can.
Do you have any suggestions on this eminent domain word footage?
Um, so you're, okay, so you said you wanted to put it in. Where it says permitting and review, and. Is this, is it something you want at the beginning?
You don't think so? Yeah, I do, I do, like what you're saying, yeah, I think so, you're a bad.
So.
Permitting review procedure. Under article. We need to change those two, I think uh. Our article five, section, we're going to raise the tangency of the original like order. That says article five, we should change that to section five, permitting review procedures. What were you gonna say, Carol?
What were you gonna suggest, Carol?
No, I was just gonna say, if you're talking about eminent domain, it sounds like that's, that should be an important piece that goes right at the beginning. And I think I heard, I don't know if I heard Wade say something about, or Steve maybe even said something about um. Like having its own. I don't know, does it just need to go under, does it need to go like after? After A on the administrator, and then just change the letters on those, so it it ends up being B about eminent.
There's a citing, that's a report document, that's really pages and pages of that. So I would think you're just gonna make this take in the B under, yeah, maybe on, and then move B to C, yeah.
Okay.
We can do that, Carol, and then, okay.
Yep, I'm just gonna, I'll just put in here right now, I'll put, I'll just put eminent domain, we can, you can tell me what you want to write, and then I'll just change the letters.
That'll be. What do we want to write? Wait, everything for now on, and then, yeah, we get. Just legalizeize on over that, so we can, number one, all right.
Yes, we're coming through. With uh. Oh. Tame County, you know, we have, so site plan two, three, four. And this is really section, would be section five rather than article.
All right.
You know, somebody. They kind of a different numbering system on that. The permitting and review would be section five, and then those things that label that are there, and then, I think, like Steve suggests, we put it. Make the permitting review, or the B, B is uh, eminent domain. Doesn't that really stand though condemnation waiver? Eminent domain, they don't get a permit, they don't get, they don't get anything. Mm-hmm. I mean, that.
We can just use that line right now.
Section under section six.
And six under eight years. You have a copy of any near counties, Carol?
Yep, it's right in front of me.
Well, we'll just insert number one under section six, condemnation waiver, that sentence there.
All right, so wait a minute, cause you, cause you cut in and out, so where are we at right now?
We can, we, I, we can put this together and send it.
Yes.
All right, well, yeah, we'll, we'll fill it in and. We'll get it to you.
Yep.
So that's B, and then what's B now will become C for setting.
And did I say you, okay, you said something about where it says like article four, that should that, you don't want it, you wanted to say section four?
Previous page, what should be section five? Assistant with the, I think we gotta do the numbering. Follow through, cause somebody's saying that moved around, so that would be, article four would be section five rather than article four.
Okay, so you want that to be section five?
All right, let's move on to the next discussion item, lawful restrictions on total acre difficulty scale solar allowances in the county. Ooh, ooh, great.
Don't have my laptop back, I had a. That's incorrect about different counties, like in what, what acreage requirements they had, they're any where from six hundred and forty acres to two hundred and forty, and some over like. Two hundred and fifty acres, then uh, if someone later wanted to do it, they could come and apply for uh. Variance, or and show that, but initially it was a two hundred and forty acre. And there was, there was one county that was really, which I was pretty ingenious, they had. Yeah, like there were twenty-five acre limits on the sites, and you know, like this farmer could have twenty-five acres, and that farmer could have twenty-five acres, and. But they had to be split up out of every section if you don't have twenty-five acres. That section panels.
So they're, they're a lot of, they're six hundred and forty acres in one section, right?
Yeah. And that what took, what would you do, something, I mean, everything's divided up to forty, we all started at forty days, so I, I think, you know, either eighty or a hundred and sixty, or, you know. I mean, that's what most land is called as, and most land was originally surveyed as.
Mm-hmm. They, I think there were, the ones that I saw that had. Like two hundred and forty acre, over for the county, you know, four hundred acres or whatever. It seemed like they just didn't want big, you know, really the thing like down. By payroll, half payroll.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, how many acres they got up there?
And, you know, we may want to back off, but I, initially, I don't know, from a way. We can always adjust it, and if you miss it at the beginning, then you're, you get covered in, you're not gonna get it undone.
Hundred and sixty acres.
That's been plenty high, yeah.
I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of.
Well, now, this, this is our design here for total per county. The, the city is thinking for size, I would talk about where, like, total per county.
Yeah, that's what's in our notes within the county, possible restrictions on total acreage of utility scale solar allowed within the county.
What, now, we, we say we're putting a limit of twenty-five megawatts is what we have in that, in that.
How many, that's what we have in there, but how many?
How many acres?
In our notes, that's in here, it says. Cause the presently requires approximately ten acres of land create one megawatt.
Yeah.
So that'd be two hundred and fifty acres of land to create. Twenty-five, right? So one big, one, one big industrial site would be up to two, did I say two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty acres, yeah.
Do you believe it?
Well, we put in, we, we already said you can have a twenty-five megawatt.
So we need to be consistent with that, don't you think?
Right.
I always say that I would just say. Two hundred and fifty acres. But then that doesn't talk about the total in the county.
Right.
So this, um, the ones that I would refer, were, were county totals. That is like this is the total for the county, but then there was, and a lot of them, that did say that was the total for the county, and there was one county that said. After that was done, if another application wanted to be made, they would have to provide for adjustment, or to be judgment, and apply for variance. And when, when this better was met, plus you got a variance.
Well, you said two hundred and fifty acres, that allows one utility scale solar in the county.
You get, you, we get three hundred, what do you get, thirty-six?
Township.
Yeah, by townships, so.
Right.
Yeah, if you put it in. And you got one, you definitely have the variance, if you've been letting another one in, or.
Right.
And they didn't, then they just go through the variance. Sure, but that.
Yes.
We met the Indian Audrey Director.
Yes.
Keep in mind, gentlemen, that one acre of land can hold up to one thousand solar panels, anywhere from one thousand to fifteen hundred.
That, aye?
Keep that in mind.
Well, it depends on the size of the solar panel, doesn't it?
True, very true, that's the general, general number.
One acre of land can turn.
One thousand to fifteen hundred solar panels.
One's, depending how many square feet that one, how many square feet is a solar panel?
I can research that out for you, though, if you wanted to do.
One in Linn County worked that big, there were a lot of them there, but just, there's, yeah. They're all copper, they seem like they're producing, yes.
Yeah, well, I, I, thank you, do we want to put limit on, or?
Yeah, I think we should put some kind of limit on it.
Well, two in the county, five hundred acres. Other than that, I don't think, you know, I mean, you're not, I guess, don't want to restrict it completely, right? But, but you want to control it a little bit, I think, yeah. Not entirely, I understand it.
As a good, if it's a good hit, if you really have a variance, and we, we'll tell me to, we'll adjust it later, but if you don't have something there. Lose it, then you can't, you can't take it back out, so, and I. Wish I had some of the other county ordinance that it has, but I'm not sure where exactly they. That in that, on, on ours, that might be one of the things, one of somebody, one of the earlier pages. Where does this say twenty-five megawatt limit?
Right at the beginning of our ordinance, if I guess.
Under A on page two.
The systems with a total capacity of more than twenty-five megawatts are forbidden under this ordinance that the presently parts and approximately any critical land. Create a one megawatt for using current solar panel, which converts to two hundred and fifty acres.
Technology's gonna change, though.
Yes, it is.
I mean, it happened already.
Yeah, well, that, that. Put it in right there, then.
Yeah, put it in right there, yeah.
Tame County would like to limit, or Tame County limits. Gonna work that. This ordinance will allow only two utility scale solar.
I'll be asked number two utility units.
Well, I, I think, well, they, we could be a bunch of smaller ones, like a bunch of fifty acre ones, say five hundred, that's, it's like five megawatts. I think we need to specify five hundred total acres.
Yeah, I think that's probably right, so, might be the best way to address. We're pointing to a, up to a total of five hundred acres.
Right now, and the thing we just write in there, five hundred, uh, limit five hundred total acres in Tame County. And then we can get the legal wording correct, but we put that right in there between J and K.
Now, do we want to make sure that is listed as commercial solar?
Oh, yeah.
That's just commercial solar.
These other ones could be.
Then that won't be, that won't affect the community solar at all.
Right.
Right. Put it between J and K, you think?
Right, so the, the K will have to be, you know, a little bit, have to be shifted. A. L, M, N. Do we want? Do we need like both?
Of the old, just not for.
Probably shouldn't.
To make it.
Yeah, five hundred acres per county. For, yeah, limit of five hundred.
Four, yeah, limit of total.
Total.
And where did, where did you want to put that at? Where were you putting that at?
Between J and K, at the end of J and K on page four. Uh, page three on.
Yeah, okay, I, I've got, this talks all about the twenty-five megawatts and J, solar energy unit uh. Scale generation. Talks about a solar farm, but we'd like to do a limit of five hundred acres of commercial solar.
Within the county.
Within the counties, yeah, within the county.
Did you hear that, Carol?
I did.
Somebody want to make that a motion? Want to consider it a motion, or we better let somebody make a motion.
I move that we, would I have a limit of five hundred total acres of solar? Tame County, then that gets added to our ordinance. Second.
So we have a motion in a second to limit the amount of acres of utility scale solar to five hundred acres within the county. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Carol? Molly.
Close the day, motion carried, now we better go back and make a motion on the eminent domain too. It'd be official.
Yeah.
Oh, where do we put that?
Um, section five, you're.
Well, what do you get?
You know, B.
Why, why do you get to make the motion?
Uh. Sorry. I'm denying the exercise of eminent domain in it.
The use of eminent domain within the, the permitting and building of a solar, a commercial solar project.
What if we word that whole sentence, please, and split it between like.
He, I knew, I knew, he might, excuse me to catch that. Stayed.
You're right. Let me read that. You know, that's it. Each.
Okay, issuance of a construction permit shall be conditioned on the permit holders. Enforceable promise supported by the consideration of the issuance of a construction permit. That the permit holder shall never or seek to use eminent domain to acquire any real property interest. To construct or operate the project.
Yes, second.
Sounds free, that's unpassable.
So we have a motion in a second to include a condemnation waiver. Not allowing eminent domain to be used, to be inserted in section five under permitting and review under B. Starting from the discussion. All in favor, aye, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close the day, motion carried, we'll move on to C. Any possible notice of intent for projects before approaching the landowner. I talked to one of the supervisors tonight, and they said the problem we're having is someone will call. Or it could happen, they'll call Laura, inquire about putting up utility scale solar, wind, or wind, and they aren't even aware that. We're under a moratorium right now, so we need to somehow put in there. A notice of intent before they approach landowners especially, so we don't get into this problem that we've had. So we don't get into this problem that we've had of, these must have been signed by so-and-so, why aren't you signing up? Your neighbors are all doing it, and the county doesn't even know about it officially yet.
Notice of intent must be filed after moratorium expires.
I think, I think.
Expiration.
You're, you're talking about. Before they contact landlord, or.
But why would they contact landowners if there's a moratorium?
Because that's the way they work.
That's true, it's not.
I think even, but trying to get around the moratorium, if the county just knows that there are people out there, you know, getting old people to sign up.
I don't know how you're gonna sort of, yeah, or any of the work, I mean, people are gonna be looking around, they're all looking around for opportunities, and.
Then we can table that one for now, then.
That, that's going to be a hard one, I mean, I, I think we, we, um, keep it going, but. Not know how you'd force it either, you know? The, the only thing you can do is, is if you, if they had, if they did not have a notice of intent with, with the planning and zoning administrator, uh, they will not receive consideration for a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's good, we can put it into words now.
Okay, Megan, no one, yeah, no one voids her, I can do that.
You would also want to decide if you want that notice of intent to go to the zoning administrator or directly to the board supervisors, or both? You continue with any combination of these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think both.
You can do that.
Sure.
Yeah. Should be at the beginning. Yeah, right, kind of gives, runs right into the definition, so. Please, please, hold on. They, yeah, I can cut it, if we.
Would be right under section one, or utility scale solar energy system?
Any permitting could be voided, do you want to do it that way, or do you want to make sure that it is voided? Do you want to give the board supervisors and the zoning administrators some discretion? Somebody just forgot, somebody made an error.
Right. These are just suggestions again, not giving them guidelines, but.
But, but I think, you know, usually whatever we.
They're gonna.
They're gonna take.
Ask that question one more time, should we?
So, what I'm, I'm saying is that, yeah, do you want to make sure if you don't file a notice of intent prior to going out and doing anything at all, uh, you're not going to get a permit, or do we want to say, hey, we can reject your permit?
Can reject.
It, it, give me an option, give the option of the administrator or the board supervisors, that they can then reject it.
Yeah, give them that option.
Because it may be a great project, I mean, maybe something we're going to do, and then we got to look back and change everything.
Somebody have that, yes, let me just check the goal, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Will be at the discretion of the rest of the.
And the zoning administrator.
And the zoning, and the zoning administrator.
Okay. Right after definition, but it's, we've got the.
If a notice of intent is not filed with the zoning administration and board supervisors, any permitting uh, for said project will, yeah, can be voided at the discretion of the board of supervisors and the zoning administrator.
And or.
And right here, yeah.
After O, I can tell that's sorry.
And we have.
Man, I don't want to establish.
Should you done a project. The board's going to consider applications submitted under this, and, and provide leasing arrangements between the, um, but it kind of fits in here, like it.
Under the solar, that's where the term border.
Right.
Section three.
And then it's the, the board shall consider applications submitted under this, and it, and there, with the board can reject applications if they're not.
Have a file notice of.
Right. That's, that's, the, under section three?
Yes.
Let me just. Like, in here, establish my authority, everybody, the board shall consider applications, this is, so the board just consider application. And they, right in, before they do that, you put the board shall not consider applications. And with that, how we have that word if. And then the word, no consider applications under this for.
Okay.
But I think, I think this is the, kind of the area it needs to go in.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Like a curve.
It makes sense there.
Right. Do we need a motion, or have you put it forth already? You moved to do the.
Yeah.
So Stephen moved to putting the notice of intent.
A second motion.
So it's removed a second, add a notice of intent for projects before approaching landowners.
Prior, prior to land, yeah, approaching landowners.
Prior to approaching landowners. And you've got the location of it. Is there any further discussion? Laura?
Um, you were talking about just landowners, but, uh, they also do it with, like, good neighbor easements with tenants too, right? So I don't know if you want to include any landlord or citizens, or just landowners? They, they might collect, like, good neighbor ones, I, I don't know.
It's a good point, because they might go to, you know.
But not all citizens are the landowners, not all landowners are here, so I don't know if you want to include that.
I think that, I think we want to get through actual text, put that in there, you know.
Would be fun to make that work.
I think so.
All right.
The only I'm worried about is, well, they wouldn't build it on any county ground, they wouldn't build it on a state ground. State owns a hell of a lot of land along the river down here, and if the state wants to build a solar, they're going to build one.
True.
There's nothing you can do about it.
That's true. So we've got a motion in a second.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carrying. D, adding possible application fee separate in addition to permitting fee, Laura gave us a fee schedule.
So I explained a little before the meeting, the fee schedule will certainly have the accounting for, um, approved permits. So they only pay if it's been approved, and it's based on their total estimated value of the building that they're doing. Um, so you start with a thirty dollar base, um, for zero dollars up to one thousand. For anything over one thousand dollars, so if it's a thousand and one cent, um, up to and including twenty thousand dollars, that range, uh, would be nineteen thousand dollar range, is charged at fifty cents per thousand. Um, for the next thousand or a fraction thereof, so anything from twenty thousand and one cent up to fifty thousand dollars is charged at twenty-five cents per thousand, and everything over fifty thousand dollars uh, is charged at ten cents per thousand. So I gave you those three, three examples. The first one is like a hundred forty-nine thousand dollar, um, building. You've got your thirty dollar fee at the top, and then each section adds on, so the total would be fifty-six dollars and ninety cents of a permitting fee for that building. Um, the one to the top right is an example based on the, uh, one of the turbines that was permitted recently and the cost that they gave, so each permit was that total at the bottom, um, for that charge. So that would only be after it's approved though, and then, um, I believe this could be an application fee similar to like if you're applying to a college or something like that, if you send in your fee when you're applying, whether you get approved or not. And then the fee schedule would only be for after you are approved.
These are all permitting fees after they've been approved?
Yes, so if you get denied, the work is still done to review the permit, but they don't owe anything. So if a project comes in for solar, um, they could send in their application for, you know, so many different parcels. It could be multiple applications, uh, depending on what your limits are, um, but then if it gets denied, they wouldn't owe anything for all the time that was spent reviewing the permit. And then if they do get approved, they would, the application fee would not be refunded, you'd also still have the permitting fee on top, similar to if you were admitted to your college, for example.
Here's the cost of doing business.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, it, it compensates the county for the, and, and you or anyone, whoever's doing the work on it.
So I don't know if, if, how you want those applications, if it'd be per parcel, or, um, for solar, how it'd be structured, how you would want to word that out, um, how, you know, maybe the permit per parcel, if they need the permit per standing unit of solar, or if they're all interconnected, how you would work out what their permit would be for.
We've already got citing permits and required documents, and under that, it says the developer shall obtain a approved citing permit from the county, the total the developer shall provide all the following administrators when applying for the citing permit, and we go into all the things. We don't have to see on that.
Weren't they going to, some application fee?
Yeah, well, I'm. What should be, we're going to do a lot of work.
Right, right.
It's just like a, I mean, anything else, you know.
You got to apply and pay a fee.
Yes.
Yeah, you may consider like one whole parcel, like one unit for the building permit, um, whereas like, you know, if somebody's building a home and a barn, they get charged, well, depending on their use of the barn, say they have a shop, they have a home and a shop, they have to pay a building permit for both of those, they're separate structures on the same parcel. So it depends on how you want to split out your structures of solar units.
We make one flat application fee for each utility scale solar project.
I think every, each, you, and it have to be utilities, yeah, and this is commercial scale solar.
Right.
And it's a thousand dollar or two thousand dollar, that, this isn't going to bother these guys.
No, that's right.
But, but we need something to compensate the county.
Right.
Because we do all this stuff for nothing now, I mean, and the county is not, you know, getting any richer.
That's right.
I can remember what I, some of the, some of the county to go through had a pretty good one.
Yeah.
That, that, that's something, maybe a home, and, but, and, you know, some of them are pretty, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars or something, you know.
Did you have a, an idea in your head, Laura?
Uh, not recently, I believe I had submitted one with my original, uh, comments, like a year or two ago.
You remember what it was, how much?
I think I probably got it in there.
I might have it in my phone somewhere too, um.
I don't think you're online saying a thousand or two thousand dollars application fee.
No, no.
Would that be per project or?
Something that works substantially more than that.
But it, it, I don't want to, I guess, how do I say, you don't want to be a ripoff, but you don't want to, but you want to compensate the county.
Cover it up.
Yeah, cover the cost, at least, maybe it's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, maybe twenty-five hundred dollars. For utility scale solar project, we're only talking two projects.
But this is just taking in the permit and going over it, and, and visiting the site and doing it.
There were a lot of things in there where you needed, you have an engineer.
Yes.
Some of this stuff, and they, there would need to be fees for that, some locally specified, like, the county would have this engineer, and that they would pay for.
Yeah, I think those are already addressed in here, aren't they? I mean, I thought we had, we.
I think we're covering that, the county isn't liable for those fees.
Yeah, no, that's right.
For those engineers and.
This is where we are liable, I mean, once they give us permit, I've got, somebody has to go to work and, right, and make sure that, you know, hey.
All the T's are crossed, the I's are dotted.
Yeah, and that, does that cover like the enforcement, and like they get the permit, they go out to start to do the work that, that inspected, and that they are following what those guidelines were.
That comes more, I mean, the permit, than, you know, this is, this is just a one-time application fee, is what I call it, yes.
A twenty.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred dollar, one-time application fee, non-refundable.
Right, right. That go right in the beginning of the review of the procedure.
Written out of all applications for, for citing permit. You got any comment on that, Carol? The twenty-five hundred dollars, sound all right to you?
Well, I don't have it in my pocket right now, but it sounds fine, um, I just, it got a little garbled at the beginning, so this application fee, it, it does not, once you're approved, it doesn't go to any of your permits, right? It's just an application fee.
It's just a fee, yes, that goes to Tampa County.
So if they don't get their permits, they don't get the money back, and if they get their permits, it doesn't apply to any of that.
Yeah, it's just the cost of doing business.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I mean, we got a, we got, county's got to be paid some of that, you know.
So then that's, that needs to go basically at the beginning of the ordinance, right?
Yes.
Back at the beginning of the permit review procedure, I think would be the place for that.
I've got page fourteen, I don't know if you guys have that.
Permitting review procedure.
Yeah.
Permitting and review procedure.
Already, already put the eminent domain right in there.
Yeah. Right at the beginning of there, we put the application fee. For all that, Carol?
Yeah, I just have a, so I have a question about, so it seems to me that the stuff that we're putting in permitting review is really kind of the important stuff that people need to know ahead of all this, and I'm just wondering if that needs to come before anything else, like when we have this stuff up here about the site plan and everything else, do we think of that, the permitting review should come the section before that? Should that be the most important? And did that make sense?
Well, that makes sense.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Really, is, any other kind of application, it's at the beginning, isn't it?
Yeah.
You want, people want to know when they're going to have to pay to apply.
What do I have to go through?
What do I have to go through?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if permitting and review needs to come before, I got to look on my thing here. Um, should it come before? Well, it's kind of, I don't know, this is weird, because section four says application requirements and site standards, but it seems to me permit, so maybe, maybe the application fee should go under where, under section four, where it says application requirements and site standards. where, under section four where it says application requirements and site standards rather than under permitting and review, because the application fee has nothing to do with the permitting.
Right.
Yeah, maybe site, site plan showing maybe ought to be two and number one would be a non-refundable fee payable to Tama County for a hundred dollars. Filing fee.
So did you, so Steve, you were kind of, it got kind of quiet for a minute. Are you saying that the application fee should be like one and the site plan should be two?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Right.
That's all, what do you think?
That's okay, it's one and one.
Throw it into motion, I'm all pruned. Do you have comment?
Yeah. This is something making the world round, see what the other counties are paying, you know? That sounds pretty low to a commercial, commercial thing, you know?
But the permit will be a lot more. I mean, the permit, what would, if it's like five, you know, five and ten million dollar, the amount of permit will be.
This is just maybe a shot.
It's gonna be a lot. This is just for the, just to look over the paper one. Yeah.
Thank you.
This is just for large utility scale. It's not for residential.
No, just utility scale solar.
What about, this hasn't happened yet, but what about in town? You know, one of these two towns, or Daisers or Ryback decided that not Ryback, that's probably not Tami County. I don't know. Anyhow, what if they decide they would like to have, like Marshall Town is arguing right now. Are you including them into this large utility scale?
That's the other.
In town, so projects, you know, solar projects, yeah. Different ordinance, next project. Project, pardon me, what'd you say, that's the next project.
That's the next, go for it, we dive into.
One of them has something.
Yeah, no emotion, holy.
There's like a.
I move that we charge a twenty five hundred dollar, the Tama County charges a twenty five hundred dollar fee. And what would you call that?
Application fee?
Yeah, application fee. Non-rev, or
Non-refundable.
Non-refundable, yes. Application fee.
Moved in second to card application to twenty five hundred dollars, you've got to read that, Laura, right?
Yes, I do.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carried. Now we're to review definitions for Tama County, that's all ordinance.
These, this is, you know, we had a couple of sections that were out of Des Moines.
Yeah.
And these are definitions that Des Moines has. Where I got the yellow, those are definitions that we don't have. Some of the other ones like maintenance, solar farm energy system, that isn't used in Des Moines or in ours. But all the, all the ones in yellow, like this, the solar energy system, some of those we've already done. Where the personal holder, that, this one isn't used in our and there were some of them that, that are on here that we have already have, like solar farm, we already have that definition.
All the yellow ones we do not have.
Right.
Yeah, I got J and.
Wade, I don't, I don't think any of these were Des Moines County. I'm looking at our regular, our, our first Tama County ordinance and these are the same ones in that. I think these are just the ones that we, when we first looked at the ordinance, these were the, these were already in there.
You think they are, Carol?
Yeah, because I'm looking at the original Tama County ordinance and the one that was given to us at the very beginning. And these are the definitions that came with it. The only thing we did is we added the occupied residential area at the end, but we did not define it. And I just put in, all I did, because when I was putting this in chat GPT to clean it up today, it wouldn't go any further until I put a definition. So I just, I put a definition in. But that, that may or may not be enough.
See, some of it, like abandonment administrator, border supervisor, those, those aren't in ours now. They need to be in there, the definitions, don't you?
Right, yeah.
Because they, where some of them aren't used in the original Tama County part back, the ones that I highlighted are all used
Yeah.
in the sections that were from Des Moines. And they, they aren't in, you're in Tama County.
So you're wanting, you want to add some more definitions in? That's what I'm hearing?
Yes, they're from.
There's some definitions that aren't in ours presently that need, we think need to be added.
Okay, is, and you said from Des Moines, Wade, is that a document we already have?
We have, we have this one before.
What's that?
We've had this one before and we used a lot of this.
Yeah, that, well, it's in the, it's right beginning of the Des Moines ordinance.
Yeah.
And there's, there's some of them, though, that look at like cluster of solar arrays and we have, in ours, we have under H, we have solar array. There's a group of panels connected together and this one still refer to a group of adjoining solar arrays. So we, we kind of have, in the, in the same thing with the J, a solar energy utility scale generation and this is solar energy, S E F S, which, which.
Oh, thank God.
Yeah, that's kind of good, though. It talks about a hundred acres or more. And so it was a hundred acres to two hundred fifty acres, a commercial one. And then under a hun, under a hundred acres is a community one. It starts giving us, starts giving us some definitions of what, you know.
Well, this is, I think the start, like we, we the ones that are in Des Moines, those definitions are used in the Des Moines sections, like the road use of the the permitting and review and the decommissioning. So it, I think we just, we can just copy them and insert them, yeah.
You follow that, Carol?
Yeah, I just found, I was just looking through my math of amount of documents to find the Des Moines ordinance, because I wanted to make sure I had that. But I don't think I have. I've got so many, I've got permitting and review documents. I don't have, I don't, I'm gonna have to look for the full ordinance, but you're talking, you like some of the definitions under that one, I'm assuming.
Yeah, there's a reason that technically they have them in there and, so I think, you know, you want
Lawyers.
We have followed the rules and, yeah, to the, everything is defined. And let go back to the ordinance, the ones, the ones that I highlighted, I'd find them all in the ordinance and then one of that. And like civic building, I didn't see that in there or in ours.
Okay, I got that document now, so do you want, do you want those? Instead of the ones we have in there, do you want to take the ones or do you want me to go through this and add in the ones we don't have?
Well, what I did was I went through our ordinance that we have it now and the ones that that are used in that ordinance, I highlighted on here, and there's some that aren't. There, they have one here occupied dwelling and, you know, we have, that was one that especially we had like a residential area and, and the complex, then they were referred to a residence. And we were talking about having the residential area, which would be the ours and the, things like that. And I think we need to define that. Make a definition for that. And then in the ordinance where that's used, there are some places where it says a residence. And if we want to change that word to the residential area or just, that, that a residence is the area that includes the, you know, the yard and the workspace and stuff around it.
Can we have some time? This is going to take some time.
Right.
Put, put these two together and work on these for the next meeting and then find ways at that.
And it did, I, I said, it was, it was a lot of time, because every one of these developer, I go through and go through the whole thing and see if there's any place where developer was used. And I have to do from the back, all twenty pages and see if the maximum or the minimum or the until. And there were something back and forth, until the back number minimum. For getting those definitions. One other topic, the groundwater.
Oh, storm water.
Storm water.
That's a, we want to able to start next meeting then, get any definitions hammered out?
I'd like to have some time to go through it. Look at, I mean, look at the document.
All right.
Kind of, I never.
Let's put that down for agenda for next meeting.
I am sorry, I printed off a copy that did not have waste station of groundwater and storm water runoff. So that is on the agenda. You can talk about that in both. It just didn't get on your print copy.
That's all right. Break, or do you want to go make a? We're good there. We don't have a lot left to do, shouldn't we? We want to deal with that oh, like thrown off of groundwater, right?
Yeah, well, and I, and I think this is another one that if we just introduce it and then we, and we go to work on it.
All right.
So I'd like, this is this, this is kind of one of the things, I think I brought this one before.
Yeah.
That happened and that one, they did have some heavy rains. You know, it wasn't just like a regular shower, but those things can happen. And when I go through on to here, here are some other, you did kind of county ordinances and then look at the
What they've got ordered here.
Give you some of them, either, they're different counties and just some of the wording that they had storm art, storm water management and a lot of they do, they do kind of erosion and sediment control, storm water purpose of pollution and runoff, groundwater, covering buffer areas. Storm water, I mean, everybody's got like the storm water management pollution removal storm water. Now they, these are some, some typical ones they're in control and a lot of reference the MPDES permit.
Yeah, I see that.
State Department.
Department of Natural Resources. That would be good to reference.
Ground cover solar. And that, that, there's some of the ones that, and I think, or I researched it during the construction is the time that's really critical that you can have some of the things there's sediment control. Anyway, as, as I'm going through this, this one here, I think was, was the only one that really referenced. Detention facilities sufficient to capture runoff of a twenty five year storm should be placed. The release of the rate of the water shall be restricted so not to exceed the volume of a five year storm. And that is the only one that I think really did address that. And you know, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have this kind of a mess with that. And I, I'm going through there and I don't know, I'm not sure what university did this, but this was here's all the references, the credits and everything. This is a you get a degree after you get.
Yeah.
I had this in the ground. But this, right, you go back, look at this page, second page there. And this is really explained, like you'll have, what comes off the edge, you have just the regular, what's coming through. And then what's underneath, what can, when there, now if, if it's positioned in such a manner that what comes off of here, the extra can be fully utilized here, you have no increase.
It's not going to erode here.
It's not going to erode that.
Not anymore than him, he didn't have them there. You, when you go through this, if you do all the things with this calculation, the thing you have, you could end up with something that's no worse than, than if it wasn't there. But it's, it's doing it, doing it right. And there are a lot of things that affect that. And if you, let's see, flip over to
Orientation, panel presence, panel witness face.
Right, yeah, all those things. And when, when it goes through there, it says, this doesn't have a great, like a big effect, this doesn't have a big effect, this doesn't have a big effect. But they all added together, do. And there was one of the ones, and this kind of changed.
This is mostly Minnesota stuff, isn't it?
Oh, Colorado, Minnesota, I don't remember where all and the, and the soil types and so on. Soil types was, was a big one. And that's something I wouldn't have considered, but this, this, here on page, well, page nine, did it label one out? Look for this, I think. Look, look at this. Verisole, gravel, real crop. And get, get down, to me, the forest, and see, I mean, you're getting, you're getting positive or new perennial cover zero. But the forest, to me, when I go out in the woods and it's raining, if I don't get struck by lightning and retreat, I mean, I don't see runoff. I mean, like, if, if it's forest, it's grays heavy or something like that and it's compact, it isn't, but just the regular woods, you go back in the woods. But I wouldn't have really, look at that.
What, how is that? I can't, I don't believe that. Mature prairie?
I mean, that, when, and when I, when you go back to the
The established grass, I mean.
Or grass or, but the tall prairie, all those big flower and everything like that.
Except if you have a printout, would you give her overview of what you guys are looking at? Just the summary of property itself or know where you guys are.
I'll give you that.
We better cover this on our next meeting, too.
Well, and I need, there's only so much we can do permitting and, and, you know, I mean.
Right, we can't control everything.
Can't control everything, yeah.
Right.
But you want to do as much as you can, but you can't.
I can't control other things. What you do is, you know, there's a lot of these, like I'll say, you reference the, in our, the different things like that. Hope we reference something like this and on the, on our permit, we'll say you can have no more runoff than what the natural, you know, vegetation, farm or with something that it's, there can be no increase. And that can be accomplished.
Yeah.
And reference that.
That's right. And this, this thing when you look.
He talks about.
It's, have a little time to look through.
They're the hell of them, of the.
Yeah, the till. They have a one page there with if you like. This thing, that, that page there. You know, this, this shows all the things that go into that calculation. And they, they have a spreadsheet and I don't know if they charge a fee for it or how, how they do that. But you put in everything about this, your situation and it, it'll.
Come on.
Right, and it's, it.
Oh my God, look at the references on this.
So I, I think stormwater runoff is, is something that we. Have new need to address. There was one, one county ordinance and I, I can't find it again, I keep looking for it. That said that, and that, in the ordinance, they just said it can have no increase in runoff. From what.
Was before.
What it was before and I thought, how do you do that? Well.
This is all you do.
Yes, you, you look at this and, and. You know, you're. If they have that spreadsheet and you put in all the factors from the soil type, I mean, look at all the soil type, the way the, the. Direction of the, the panel, the till, things like that. And there's some things that are pretty obvious too, you know, someone where they run livestock under them or things like that, where if you have roads, you know, you look, the one down there in. Palo, you could, you could just see that one, they had runoff and they just channeled it to the Iowa River.
River, yeah.
You know, this is, this is case in Tame County. Right here. Down there, but.
A twenty-four hour precipitation event of ten inches. As if, when they were trying to make your.
Wow.
And you have those every once in a while.
Yeah, you're gonna have the hundred-year storm, the thing like that, and you're gonna get runoff. But on a normal year or, or like.
Normal.
Ten inch, if you got ten inch, if it's done. The, right, you have the tilted right and you have the spacing right and you do, you do the same in the right cover. Uh, it, it won't be any worse than, than the guy that's. Got these soybeans or. And there, there's no reason to have it. Because it's achievable. But if you just go out there and you build roads and you, you put stuff up and you don't pay attention. And you, you let the stuff come off the drip edge. You know, you'll, you'll just get channels and. So.
Are we prepared to throw this into our? Ordinance?
What's that?
Throw this, all this information or referencing that information or anything?
Well, I think we need to research it more. I, I spent time reading through it. Contacted the.
This is the first time I've seen it, so I haven't.
Yeah.
Contacted. For our next meeting too, Lord. Got it.
I'd like to see that spreadsheet. And then there, there are probably other. Others establish things like this one out there. That could be referenced, but they, I think. Like some of those, the engineer has to prove this and so on and they, they have to have something like this.
Right.
And then it has to be enforceable too afterwards because if they do something and they. You know, maybe. Uh, he was right, maybe the one they used was or wasn't right or something and then, or they. And ended up putting some roads in here that, that didn't get covered by this.
Right, it's gotta be measurable, you know, it's gotta be, you have to measure the erosion. Be able to measure there.
We're in the runoff, you got. You know, hundreds, hundred acres of this, if, if. You know, you, now they, most places, if you build a parking lot over an acre, you gotta have stormwater runoff. You know, it's required to have the capture and do all that stuff and we're talking about. Two hundred acres as possible of those flat roof. But I was really encouraged by this that.
It can be done.
That can be done. If it's done correctly. But it is, doing it correctly is not the cheapest way to build it.
No. Never is.
Alright, you want it done right the first time.
Wait. Is there anything in your information that, is there anything about any possible testing of the groundwater that comes from these solar panels? As to what is in that groundwater? Is, is there, did you come across anything like that where?
Read solids off of it.
Well, just from my reading, there's trace amounts of cadmium, arsenic and, let's see, other one.
It, that is an interesting topic nowadays.
That leak out of these solar panels due to the groundwater, cadmium, arsenic and. I forget, the, the, the third one is a big one too. Anything, anything in your reading that show that anybody does any testing of that water?
I have, I seem like there might have been. I mean, some of the, some of the ordinance, they, I know they address things like solvents and things like that in a lot of the ordinances.
Okay.
They, you know. Forever chemicals. You know, they're places out east where you can't grow a crop because of just the. These, these things like that happening and they say, everybody has got plastic in your brain now, did you know that?
I do know that.
You drink out of plastic bottles and do things like that and they're, they're finding out. That, I can't remember what, what, that it's a significant amount of plastic that we all have, if the older people have in their brains.
Microplasticity.
And. I don't know, I haven't. Really seen that in an ordinance yet or anything like that, but.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, least for what, thirty years that we.
There are. And then, whether, that would have to be in the ordinance and I mean, every thing that you do out there has to meet groundwater standards. You know, you can't go out and. Dump something on the lawn that legally that, that you can do that, so. There are a lot of federal regulations that have already covered. We think that, that would have to be pretty well infected.
We look at next meeting days? Anybody got a calendar with them?
Oh, they're very funny. Um, Tuesday, eleven. The, you guys like Wednesdays still?
Yes, Carol does and I do too. Do you have, your Wednesdays are open this summer, Carol or not?
Say it again?
We're looking at next meeting day.
Okay.
Two weeks, anybody or like the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth should be okay. Um, hopefully I can make that one.
What about you?
I'm just looking right now.
Twenty-fifth work for you?
Yeah. Yes.
We'll be back, Andrea, for twenty-fifth. We'll be back on. On YouTube that week. Yes. Twenty-fifth should work. Okay, well, let's set a meeting for the twenty-fifth and two weeks from tonight at six o'clock again.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Another question. You said for May, it said five hundred acres total commercial solar for Tame County. Did I understand right that you're still gonna have further discussion about the number of acres per project? That you wanted to seek legal counseling?
I think we're maxing the, per project, the two hundred thirty acres per project. So basically, we're allowing two projects of a natural size solar within the county. That answer.
That's nice. Thank you.
Is there anything else you guys would like to add to next agenda that you're thinking of now? You can always let me know later, but just for now, anything else?
We better think about how we're gonna define community solar, don't we?
Community solar is gonna be, because that'll be next. Something we're gonna start working on.
Something the agenda. Uh, addressing the.
Be good. Find some of those that are. Yeah.
Are there some out there, community solar?
I'm not sure. I have not come across anybody else. I haven't gone looking.
Think there is Steve or?
Yes. But they may be out east.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
There's a couple to look at.
Yeah, but, but it may not be applicable to what we're talking about here.
Oh, can we, can we get some help on like the wording? These things that we don't want to get done?
We don't need any help anyway.
I tried.
We could probably send this through legal when you guys get done with your major points and changes and definitions.
Attorney again?
Give it to the attorney again, yeah.
And let him look at it.
We'll figure out an attorney to give to.
Very much good and like, we're not residents, you know, how we, that gets defined.
We need to do that in the next month. Everybody occupy dwelling, occupied dwelling. Part of our definitions.
Occupied dwelling and residence.
That's what you got in this meeting?
That's, yeah.
There's a discussed definition of occupied dwelling, uh, at least one or two meetings ago when you brought it up in the first place. Um, I'd have to look back at the video, but I thought you had.
Well, I think it is.
Talked it, talked about what you meant as occupied dwelling.
It seemed aggressive. It looked good. So I don't know, you know, I was hoping to sit down with you. Get through some of the language and a couple of things I had questions on. I didn't get a chance.
Steve said you were there four times before you were able to get an answer. So thank you for doing that. I don't wanna chase them around.
Well, there's five hundred acre maximum, two fifty. Out close, Canadian together.
Well, great, great enough that the project could be a half mile apart. I think that's right. That's already in there. They wouldn't have to be two hundred fifty or five, it could be a hundred near, a hundred near.
Is, uh, Cherry Cuchares, what's the stance on his, when he's got close to a thousand acres? Cherry Cuchares Solar Project.
Over by Tur.
Yeah, what is the, is, is his gonna fall under these ordinances or is it too late because it's already?
I think our CFO pretty well eliminated that.
Once they did, once we did the land used changes, he said, uh, well, the, the company called me and said that they. Stepping back from the project.
Okay.
That was at me and I.
At nine AM, which killed my whole morning then, I got a call from Black Hawk County. The wind and solar people have moved up there, just hitting it hard, heavy and I talked to Mark and he said, because of the sixty-day. Restriction that. Trump just put out, which he thinks about fifteen days of that and all of this stuff. So they're really, anyhow, the person that called me, leathered, beating on the doors, but the concern was a neighbor that is being. Targeted, wife just passed away. Not in a good mood. Um, ready to give a thousand acres, uh, sign a thousand acres contract up in Black Hawk County, so. This hasn't gone away very far. That might even be that Minnesota group that was in here one day talking to us. So I'm really glad you guys are working on this because it's just right, it's just out there.
But we were also told by Ted Renewables is they're stepping back for a while until the state comes in. And overrides the county ordinances and gives these companies a green light to just. Override all county rigs, all county ordinances and put those suckers up.
Well, they tried, they tried to do that last two years in the state.
I know, I know, but coming from Ted Renewables, two years.
We need to keep after our legislators to know.
Exactly, exactly. This isn't going away.
No.
This is, it's just building steam is what's happening here.
They get, been getting these in the mail?
We need to be very aware.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
The cell government rental veto house file three six thirty-nine to protect.
Land.
Industrial.
Oh, what'd she do with that today? She did something this afternoon. Did you hear what it was? Do you know where she vetoed it? She did veto it?
Yeah.
And they are gonna try and call the special, override or veto.
The name of the domain she went for.
She did veto it.
I believe she did some.
Some veto. What does that, is that gonna miss out?
They're gonna try to get enough signatures to have a special session to override her veto.
The, yeah, I've been getting, I got like two or three of these things in the mail. You click it on your phone and you tell her that we won't, we support. All these jobs in Iowa. That's, that's what kind of concerns me about the. The same thing with the solar. They just said. They, the guy from Ted Renewables called them and said that they were gonna keep the leases because within a year or two, they have that passed through the state.
Yeah, they're gonna be able to go around us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure they're banging on the doors, so, boy. I'm sure they're banging on the doors that way.
McDonald's. They've got a staging area on Highway sixty-three north. And. So they're not supposed to disturb any ground that's over sixty CSR. Right, that's when you're talking about. Yes, when. Uh, yeah, maybe I shouldn't address that here, but, but this is kind of a general question. But somebody said, I don't know, they actually changed the CSR. On that so that before they started. Building that staging area, otherwise they weren't supposed to do it.
Took up a title, sorry, long?
Yeah.
Changing the CSR.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and if they change, you know, they get the, in the plaque. And they change the CSR rating or did away with it because it's like industrial. I don't know. You know anything about that?
But that's really very, very back to the. Burn leased, I think. The lease from burn and they got to be done. All that top's always going back over that and that's normal, of course.
Well, it's like, so we can, so we can discuss some of this after the meeting. Hell, I wanted to make sure. You said except community zoning, do you mean commu- community solar? Is that what you're referring to in your county? Okay. Make sure you get that in the, in the ordinance. We're working on that on our next meeting.
We'll be doing this separate ordinance for community solar. Uh, with the moratorium that, that supervisors voted on. Um, that will be similar to what solar and wind have. They've got the moratorium until we can get a ordinance created.
Hopefully we can use some of the warnings, right, that they've already got and we should be able to, yeah. Can you remember quicker?
There were some ordinances while you guys were talking, I was looking up, um, there are some community solar ordinances and actually what they've done is they just, they kind of put it in their. Ordinance for small scale and large scale. So we might be, we might have to look at a solar ordinance that has both of those in it. Some of them are combined.
So once, once you have your ordinance drafted, written, there will be public hearings on it?
That's up to the supervisor, I believe.
Or supervisor takes.
Supervisors have to have public hearings before they can do anything. I do not believe with them having the public hearings that you need to, but I'm going to double check that to make sure I don't get the bad advice.
Yes, just turn it over to the supervisors, but they have to hold public hearings.
Yeah.
Probably three in the west states. Depending on how well attended they are, I suppose. Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would be adjourned.
I second it.
And move and second to adjourn. All the members say aye.
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 Adjourned.